Okay. It is 6:30 PM and today is Thursday, June 26th. I'm going to call it to order. The Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. This is a business session, so we will be voting. Mr. Curran, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
So, please join me in the pledge of allegiance behind me.
(Inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go to the agenda, I think Julie, you wanted to recognize some of the Olentangie community?
I did. I just wanted to recognize a great volunteer in our community who passed away on Saturday, Jim Auger, whose daughters, I know the oldest, Casey went to Olentangie, and I think the youngest, Lauren, went to Orange. But Jim was instrumental way back in the day on redistricting. And he was such a calming voice when we would get into those meetings. He did it multiple times. And he was always the voice of reason. And I'm very saddened to hear about his sudden passing. They're going to have viewing services tomorrow from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Sheddinger Funeral Home in Worthington, and then a celebration of life on Saturday at Heritage Christian Church on Maxtown Road from 10:00 to 11:00. But he and his wife Candy were just great volunteers in this district way back when we were really growing and we needed all the volunteers we could get. So I was very saddened to hear about that, and I just wanted to let people know.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the agenda. You should have received via email earlier today, the addendum to the agenda, which adds about a page and a half of hires. We also have in addition to the discussion items, we're going to add item D.
Correct.
Sunday graduation.
Mm-hmm.
And do you have two others?
No, I have one other for executive session. If you look at the executive session item, we need to add, right now it's to discuss the appointment of public employees and appointment of a public official, and we need to add to that preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees at section 121.22 of the Ohio Remise Code.
Okay. Any other questions or amendments on the agenda? So with that, I will entertain the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, we now move into Agenda Item 5, which is the presentation. And these will be the regional winners from the Invention Convention. Julia, who's going to go first? Is it Shanahan?
Come on up!
Come on up, please, if you're here for the Invention Convention.
Good evening. I'm Judy Jones. I'm the gifted services coordinator at Shanahan. And this is Morgan Gibbs. And a very brief introduction of her and her achievements while she's setting up. Morgan is a highly decorated 7th grade student who will be in 8th grade next year. She was a state qualifier for Power of the Pen, but she's also, she's the whole package. She's a great science and math talent who, we really love it when Olentangie kids are, many of whom are very, very talented, also roll up their sleeves and really work hard, and she's one of those. She participated in the Invention Convention as a 7th grader this year. We have had Invention Convention in our elementary schools for many years, very successfully. Melanie Andres administers that program, but not much success at the middle school. Not a lot of kids at that age level were grabbing the opportunity. So Shanahan, we've really amped up our science fair this year in an effort to bring, give kids more opportunities in science, math, and STEM areas. And not only traditional science fair, but also Invention Convention, Christopher Columbus Awards, which really get a project-based learning type of problems, long-term problems. And she was very successful at Invention Convention, and without further ado, Morgan Gibbs.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Okay. So like she said, I'm Morgan Gibbs. I am now an 8th grader at Shanahan. And this is the presentation I gave at the Invention Convention. Since 1992, 387 school shootings occurred, racking up a terrifying total of 510 deaths. 65% of those deaths have been the deaths of children ages 0 to 19. During attacks, students, staff, and other members of society are underprotected and exposed to harm while following Allen's procedures. A big blow that recently hit our country was the tragedy of Sandy Hook. Twenty 1st grade children were brutally murdered during the catastrophe. Living in the U.S. and going to public school can have severe casualties. In fact, children aged 5 through 14 living in America have a 13 times more likely chance of being murdered by guns than children in other industrialized countries. My solution is a bulletproof poncho that folds into a pouch which attaches onto the bottom of a student's chair. My poncho is made of a woven layer of fabric called ballistic nylon. Ballistic nylon is a tough synthetic fabric used for a variety of applications. It was originally invented in the 1940s to create flak jackets for World War II. However, ballistic nylon became part of a much less glamorous world when a DuPont chemist invented Kevlar, which is used to make bulletproof vests today. I would like to use Kevlar in the future for my poncho. However, Kevlar is a military-grade fabric that I cannot currently access. Ballistic nylon has been proven to protect from fragmentation and flying debris caused by bullet and artillery shells and some pistol and rifle shots with multiple layers. However, it was cost prohibitive at this time for me to add many layers to my poncho. If I adventure onward and possibly gain a patent, then I will definitely add more layers to secure maximum usage. Not only is Over Armour a great solution to a horrible problem, it is also cost-effective. I estimate a total cost of $100 to $200, with multiple plans that can be added into school fees, one of which you can observe on my poster, you can see that there's a very small price to pay for your child safety. The cost of $100 is added into school fees for the duration of 12 years, a parent would only have to pay a little more than $8 a year to use the poncho for the length of the school year. It is obvious that Over Armour is the best solution to injury and death due to school shootings. In addition to that, my poncho is also very simple to make. I also plan to create a system of reuse. Ponchos would be created in three generic sizes for elementary, middle, and high school students. Once a student leaves a certain area of school, their ponchos will be recycled and given to incoming kindergarteners, 6th graders, or 9th graders. The one you see now would be the middle school generic size. Rachel's challenge was brought to my school to spread a message of anti-bullying. I was moved to create a positive change, and I wanted to see if I could find a creative way to save lives, and thus, Over Armour was born. Since creating Over Armour, I have won top place at Shanahan Schoolwide Science Fair. I have also won the Kids' Choice Award for the Invention Convention, and state merit finalist for Ohio, and the National Discovery Education 3M Young Scientist Challenge. I have also been asked to be a student ambassador for the Invention Convention, which means I will speak at schools in central Ohio to promote the Invention Convention next year. I will also return to the next Invention Convention to assist the grand prize winner of this year in choosing the next Kids' Choice Award and help out with the pre-award ceremony game show. I believe that my bulletproof poncho, Over Armour, will be a cost-effective solution for a very serious problem and overall, save many lives. I would like to thank the Olentangie School Board for providing students like myself with many wonderful enrichment opportunities. The Invention Convention has provided you with an amazing learning experience and new knowledge that, without your commitment to maximum education for each and every student, would not have been possible for me to gain. In addition, I'd also love to thank you for providing students with a gifted program and wonderful teachers like Mrs. Jones. Mrs. Jones is a great encourager. She is, hands down, one of my favorite teachers, and I consider myself lucky to have been taught by an educator like her. Thank you for your time and your commitment to students like me. Can I answer any of your questions?
Where'd you get the resources to research this? Most of them, I mean.
You mean like the fabric?
The fabric, right, the design of it? What were you looking to make, and what fields?
Well, when I first began to create my poncho, I was looking into types of fabric that I knew would like propel. And Kevlar, however, is a military-grade fabric, and that was the best option. However, I can't access that because I'm not in the military. So then I was looking around. Ballistic nylon, because it is no longer really used to make bulletproof vests today. It became part of a thing that's more used for like really heavy-duty, like, I don't know, suitcase bottoms or something. But I decided to use this because it's the next best thing. And this particular type of ballistic nylon is actually the 1050 Denier, which is the strongest type of ballistic nylon. There's actually multiple types. So I decided to use the strongest type that I could possibly get my hands on.
That's good research.
Yes. And not only is it a very inventive product, but your presentation in your speaking is very well done.
Thank you.
So, I mean, if you're not going into science, you can be a public speaker, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from ending?
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We can try it on if you want to.
Let's see that.
I've got a picture of that.
I might be a little small and stressful. There you go.
Right, you go outside.
It'll take you for more than spring.
Three bullets.
Did you say that was a medical staff?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next Agenda Item is the Board President's Report. We've got the recognition of Olentangie students for academic and extracurricular achievement. Julie, you're going to walk us through.
I am.
Presentation.
Yes, we are going to read off the students who excelled in our spring. Yeah. You're going to go up there.
Do we have another?
Take a place.
Oh, do we have another?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Just, oh.
Judith Jones, is that?
That was me.
That was that one?
Yep.
You just have one, two, three.
Oh, Tyler Runn.
Okay, not here.
Oh, so we do five.
I'm good.
Five, right?
Yep.
Just for the record.
Put that on the record. He was right.
So we've moved on to the Board President's Report. Yeah, so Julie, you can take us through the academic and extracurricular achievement.
Yes, and we didn't recognize these students at our previous awards night because they were still doing their sports activities. So tonight, we're going to pick up those people in track, and baseball, and softball, and the ones that we missed, and get them recognized tonight. So do you two want to go up there? Each year, the Olentangie Board of Education recognizes students, coaches, and staff members for their outstanding achievements in co-curricular, extracurricular, or athletic activities. In May, we were able to recognize more than 100 students, coaches, and advisors. Now that spring sports and music events have come to an end, we are happy to congratulate another 11 students, three teams, four coaches, one athletic director, and five musical groups. As I call each person's name, we ask you to walk up to receive your award and pose for a photograph. These photos will be mailed to you in the next few weeks. We'll begin with our track teams. Let's congratulate our two state qualifiers from Olentangie High School, Madeline Ball and Emily Ginter. Are they here tonight? Oh, Marnice, you going to get them for them?
Yeah.
Okay, Marnice will take them. Marnice will bring them back. Marnice is going to come back up, too. Okay, Marnice, you want to stay there? Also, from Olentangie High School, this track athlete was, of course, a state qualifier and took second place in the state in the 300-meter hurdles, Marnice Baumann. And Marnice, you set a state record in the regionals, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yes, because the record you broke was coached by my father-in-law. Yeah, Tiffany Flomo. So, yeah, so when I saw that, I was like, wow! So, good for you.
Thank you.
And where are you going to college? You going to Georgia Tech? That's what I thought. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Now, from Olentangie Liberty High School, we have Claire Wiles, state qualifier in 7th place in the state in the 1600-meter event. She was a long runner. Is she here, Claire? Okay. Then we'll go on to Andrew Johnston. He was a state qualifier in 10th place in the 3200-meter. Andrew was part of the four-man team that took 5th place in the state in the 4x800-meter relay, and the team posted a school record time in that event of 7 minutes 47 seconds and 62 hundredths of a second. Is Andrew Johnston here? Mitchell Towne, he's a state qualifier, and he is the second member of the team that took 5th place in the 4x800-meter relay, and that was on the way to this new school record. Congratulations, Mitchell. The third member of that team posting a Liberty High School record time for the 4x800 relay is state qualifier Brad Weemals. Is Brad here? Nope. Okay. And lastly, state qualifier Joshua Wojahowski, and he was the fourth member of this record-setting team. Is he here? Nope. Okay. We also have several athletic accomplishments to acknowledge, including Coach Allison Neff in the girls' lacrosse team from Olentangie High School. Is she here? The OCC lacrosse champions, and the team also made it to the state final four. And Jay's going to pick up this award. Thank you. He's going to get his picture here in a minute. And then we have, is Jeff Luxenberger here? He was the coach of the Olentangie High School boys tennis team, and he was named 2013-14 Coach of the Year. This is going to be the Jay Wolf night. And Jay, you might as well stay up there because, from Olentangie High School, let's congratulate Olentangie Athletic Director and newly engaged Jay Wolf, who was selected in the 2013-14 Ohio Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association Athletic Director of the Year. Okay, and I think this person might be pitching tonight, but I guess I haven't seen him. And now we'll move over to Liberty High School and the Patriot baseball team. Senior Jacob Nigameyer was named the 2013-14 OCC Player of the Year in right-handed, this right-handed hurler was also the 2013-14 District Player of the Year. He signed with Ohio State, and he was drafted by the Cubs. Is he here tonight? Nope. Yep, drafted by the Cubs. But I think he's going on to Ohio State.
They need him right now.
Yeah. And Nigameyer and Coach Ty Bredning helped lead their team to several championships. The Patriots were the 2013-14 OCC champions, central district champions, and regional semifinalists. Coach Bredning was also named the 2013-14 OCC and central district Coach of the Year. Coach Bredning couldn't be here this evening due to a prior commitment, so he sent two of his great players, Mitchell Griffiths and Marcus Whistlebooger, or, I hope I pronounced that right.
Whistlebooger.
Whistlebooger. And they beat Olentangie, I was at that game, to go on to the regionals. So if you give this for Coach Bredning, that would be great.
Good job, guys.
It was a great game. Next, we have the Olentangie Liberty. We have Coach Bob Lee, and he led the Olentangie Liberty softball team to many victories this year. The girls were the OCC champions, they were the central district champions, and the regional semifinalists. Olentangie Liberty High School's Alexandria Braun was a 2013-14 state qualifier, oh, sorry, I just went on. Go ahead. Congratulations. Next, we have Alexandria Braun. She was a 2013-14 state qualifier in swimming from Olentangie Liberty. And then we have Tyler Menges, who was first-team All-State in volleyball. Is Tyler here? Okay, Coach Hale, when you come on up, I want to congratulate Coach Hale and the Olentangie Liberty Boys Volleyball Team. And Coach Hale was named OCC Coach of the Year. And we have a couple music groups to recognize. From Olentangie High School, we would like to congratulate Ian Braun and the Olentangie High School Symphonic Band for earning a superior rating in the OMEA state contest. Ian also directed the Olentangie High School Marching Band, which he also led to superior rating in the state contest. Is he here? Oh, Mr. McDonald is going to accept for him. Then we have Director, you might have to stay up here, Tom. Director of the Olentangie High School Winter Guard, Cindy Braun, led the Color Guard to 2nd place in the 2013-14 MEPA state championships. And then, also receiving a superior rating in the state OMEA contest for Olentangie High School in the Advanced Women's Ensemble, was Holly Pemberton. She's the director of the group. And finally, Olentangie Orange High School, let's congratulate Director Mark Zarelli and his Olentangie Orange High School Symphonic Band for earning a superior rating at the OMEA state competition. That's it?
That's it.
The last item I want to cover in my Board President's Report is just an update on the open seat. As you may notice, we're down a board member. So we began the application process immediately after the last meeting. We've now received 41 applications for the open seat. Actually, the distribution of applications is interesting. We're actually split essentially down the middle. We have 21 male and 20 female candidates. We've got, so in terms of distribution by sex, distribution by location, we've got 13 from Powell, Levin Lewis Center, 8 Delaware, 3 Galena, 3 Columbus, 3 Westerville. So a good, deep pool that represents the district both geographically and in a number of different ways. So I think we'll have a good discussion tonight on how to narrow the field to three finalists. We'll do that later in executive session. And then the plan, as we talked about at our last meeting, was to bring the finalists back at the July 9th meeting, do the interviews, and make a selection hopefully that evening. So an update on that real quickly. That is all I had, so we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lucas.
Thank you. It's good to see the super technical class here this evening. How many does this make? Three? Yeah, three.
At least it puts bodies in the seats.
Absolutely.
More Tom Ash would be talking to nobody.
They're going to have great experience. I see Penny is new for this group right here. Is that the only new one we have in the group? Okay. You guys survived Mr. Marsh, right? That's a good thing.
Plus, Dr. Lucas, they had to listen to me an hour before we even came to the meeting.
I hope you asked him those questions we talked about that night, when we talked about the five-year forecast.
This was bonfire.
I know.
Oh, even more exciting.
Okay, well, here we are, June. I don't want to rain on anyone's parade, but it's a little bit over a month or so before we're back in school. So, at any rate, we have many good things to talk about. And first and foremost, we, I want to emphasize preliminary data in regard to the 2013-2014 results. But it looks like our district performance index is going to be 108.7, or somewhere around there, you know, once it all shakes out. If you recall, last year, I believe our preliminary was 107.6, and it ended up 107.5. So we know we're in that area of 108.7, which would be an increase of 1.2 based on the data. We had 15 buildings out of 23 above 108, earning M and A. As you recall, 108 is the threshold for an A from performance index standpoint, and eight buildings earning a B for performance index. District Y, we met, or will meet, 24 out of 24 indicators. Third grade reading, we had 100% passage rate at Johnny Cake and Tyler Runn. In 4th grade, we had it at Allen Creek and Cheshire. So that's a great accomplishment. And I think we talked about this already, or no, I think we just sent out a memo. We had 40 students that earned a perfect score on one or more sections of the OTT. And again, a reminder, we have one student right now in regard to the 3rd grade reading guarantee out of about 1,570 or so, and we continue to work with that one student. So it was a very good year, and again, I'll emphasize the fact it was preliminary. As the official stats come in, which would be somewhere around September, we, again, will get Mr. Rafe and Mr. Fettie to give you a more detailed report. But I think that's a direct reflection on the work that they have done. It's a direct reflection on the work of our staff members, who have not only survived changes in state testing, and OTES, and OPEZ, and 3rd grade reading guarantee, but they've done it with flying colors, which is not a surprise, but I don't think it's something that we should downplay and just take for granted, because I know many districts would love to have a 108.7 performance index. And again, that's a direct reflection on the work that our people do in this organization, and we're very, very thankful for that. Last but not least, the two groups we don't want to leave out would be parents of our students, and of course, our students, because they do put in the time, the effort, and they are a joy to teach. So, great year. Other good things happening, summer maintenance projects. Mr. Gordon will be giving, again, a more detailed update once we get toward the end of summer, but as you can see, we have the Olentangie High School partial roof replacement. We have the replacement of the Shanahan HVAC here. I believe it feels like it is working tonight. As you came in, hopefully you saw the service road realignment, where, you know, we had that, the couple S-curves, and we're straightening that out. And I think we already talked about this a little bit, but just a reminder, there will be speed bumps there, because I know when most teenagers see that, I know what goes through their mind, like, okay, this is going to pick up the amount of speed we can get from Olentangie High School out to Shanahan Road, but we'll have plenty of speed bumps to make sure we slow them down. And we do have our district-wide asphalt repairs as we do every summer. So a lot of good things taking place on the summer maintenance projects. These are not, by the way, the only four. I think you realize that, that these are, you know, four of the major ones that we're going through. Other good things, we have at Indian Springs, Karen Lowry, as the 2014 Ohio Schools Create a Cover Winner. And there's an example of that cover that she was featured in the Ohio Schools' June 2014 magazine cover. So, by the way, we do, I noticed today, if you've been in my office, you'll see a lot of the artwork, both upstairs and downstairs. She has, she has one up there, too. So she's very, very talented in regard to her artistic talents. We already heard this one, Jay Wolf, Olentangie High School, was the 2014 Athletic Director of the Year, according to Ohio Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. I think Jay left us already, but if you know Jay, you know he perseveres through a lot of different things and just, he bleeds blue and gold. And this is a great, great honor for Jay, because he has worked through many, many items to get there, and we are very appreciative of his efforts. Discussion items, we have Mr. Ash to my right, that is just dying to get up here to the podium to give us a governmental update, and we're looking forward to that. There's no individual in the state of Ohio that does it better, understands it better, or is more involved. So we're very fortunate to have him here. Also, still a resident of the district, correct? Yes. So we're very happy to have Tom here, and he always has great information. Our Continuous Improvement Plan revisions, as you recall from the retreat, we had our Continuous Improvement Plan discussion. We made a few adjustments to that, so we'll be looking at those and approving that. And of course, Linda will have her second reading of the board policy updates. Other things taking place, some of the agenda items that will be taking place this evening, we have a new Assistant Principal at Shanahan Middle School, Christina Zeller. I don't think Christina is here, right? I saw Mr. Tressel back there, didn't I, for a little bit? He was here. Okay. He's also an Assistant Principal at Shanahan. Nancy Free, since you recall, was the assistant here. She would be taking over at Liberty Middle School, so that's a transfer. Also, if you recall, Vince Titilio was here, maybe May?
Two minutes.
Two minutes ago. Talked about this textbook online subscription, and we're asking for approval of, you know, approximately $320,000 worth of math textbooks. approximately $320,000 worth of math textbooks. And again, he did a great job that night explaining all the things we're looking for. 2014-15 Calamity Day makeup plan. Now, again, that's on there. We have to approve that due to the fact of, by contract, we're still under the old calendar or old system. As you recall, we've talked about the fact that we're going to be converting statewide to the hour piece. This is just somewhat of a formality as we go along. Eventually, this will make its way out of the system, this Calamity Day makeup, because according to the legislature, there's going to be no such thing as calamity days when we go to hours. But right now, until we negotiate fully on that contract, we are abiding by the current contract that we have, which still says days. Last but not least, we are asking for approval of the Security Voice Contract. That's the one that when it snows, we get automatic phone calls that go out. It's been very beneficial to everyone involved. 2014-15 School Year. This was a discussion that we had at the retreat, and of course, we put it on for this evening for a discussion from a formality standpoint, just to make sure. This follow-up is for this upcoming school year that basically says graduation will be Sunday, May 17, 2015. And that's a discussion that we want to make sure everyone is on the same page at the board level. We talked a little bit about that at the retreat, and we just want to make sure we put that item to bed this evening and make sure that everyone out there knows that if we go that route, which I believe that's the route that we're going, and we want to solidify that, it will be Sunday, May 17, 2015. Other important dates, our next board business session is Wednesday, July 9. As you recall, we try to get as close to July 10th as we can because that's the magic day where, once that date comes and goes, we really don't have to let people out of contracts. So we try to get as close to that July 10th date as possible so that we can get all of our personnel done. You see, we have an addendum tonight from a personnel standpoint. I guarantee you that Wednesday, July 9th meeting will be nothing but just about personnel. We'll probably have an addendum because it's just coming and going right up to the last minute. I believe in talking with Mr. Marsh today, we are about at 85% at the replacement. We have to replace roughly 90 through retirements and people resigning, and we're right around that 85% mark of replacement. So we're in pretty good shape. Still have a little bit more to go, but we're in pretty good shape. Our administrative retreat will be Friday, August 1st. That's at 10 o'clock to 2:00, and that's up at Eagle Creek. That's been a very, very popular place for us. I believe it's the third year now that we've gone to Eagle Creek. It's way out, up by Bell Brook and Ostrander and in that area. And Tom Settis runs Eagle Creek. He, by the way, is the boxing coach at Notre Dame. I knew Julie knew that. I don't know if the rest of you knew that or not, but he does a great job. He puts on a lot of great retreats, and he does this one for us. Last but not least, we have the Board Business Work Session on Thursday, August 7. That's our next work session. It will be right here at 6:30. With that said and done, I will entertain any questions that the board may have this evening.
If you'd spend a minute, what's the purpose of the administrative retreat? What do you guys cover?
This year, what we try to do is have a theme or a book study, and this year it's David and Goliath by Gladwell, Malcolm Gladwell. And what Tom Settis does, Mr. Rafe and I will be making a visit very soon with him, and he will put team activities together that kind of mirrors that David and Goliath concept. Along with that, we have six all-admin meetings throughout the year, and those are the same types of professional development we tried to provide. Mr. Fettie and his crew puts together some professional development so that we are talking a certain theme throughout the year. So that's what we will begin this whole process of the new year at Eagle Creek, and Mr. Settis will kind of gear that teamwork toward that theme.
And so this will be Assistant Principals, Principals?
Yes, yes. All Directors, you know, both on the operations end and certified end. I think we're right around, we take 90, I believe, 80 to 90, something like that.
Okay.
It's a good day. It's a very good day. Other questions?
Anything else for Dr. Lucas?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is the Treasuries Report. Mr. Curran?
Yes, on tonight's treasure action items, there's various, several various things, the normal stuff that you usually see plus some year-end and start-of-year procedural things that are necessary as we move, as we close out here in June 30th, Monday, is the official end day of fiscal year 14, and start July 1 for fiscal year 15. So on the C-means action items, we have approving financials for May 2014, approve the board meeting minutes for May 7th and May 22nd, approve the amended FY14 appropriations at the fund level, which is something you guys see every meeting as we be able to, we need to spend money, we either increase or decrease the appropriations, and then approve the permanent FY15 appropriations at the fund level, and approve donations to the district. I'm going to bring a touch on a couple of things here real quickly. For the financials for May 2014, that's in your packet there as Exhibit C1. I want to point to Page 3 of that, as I usually do, is the general fund comparison. As you recall, this, the expected or the expected amounts are, were updated as far as the May forecast is concerned, which was approved at the last, yes, well, before the board retreat, I guess, on May 22nd. I just want to point out one really big number there. If you see at property tax allocation, the revenue, we're under 7.7 million at that point. That'll go away here, but we want, typically, that's our rollback in Homestead that we receive from the state's reimbursement. Typically, you receive that at the end of April or typically in May. We didn't get it till about two weeks ago. So thank goodness we properly plan our cash flows and everything, and we're good to go to be able to pay our bills. I don't know how some districts, you know, if they're counting on that. It came extremely late. I'm not sure why the hangup was, but it seemed to be even Franklin County, we're talking with other districts around the area, theirs was, it came about a week before that. So it was really late for some reason this year, so, which is very unique because if we owed the state some money, I'm sure they wouldn't wait like they're going to pay us. But with that being said, I just wanted to bring that big difference up, but that'll correct itself here as you, when you look at June. Some of the other stuff is, will be, is timing differences, as for example, we're under budget for other expenditures. Like I mentioned before, ESC bill, our contracted services, we hadn't paid the May bill yet, so one of the reasons for the variance. And the supplies, materials and textbooks, we're under budget about $468,000. That actually will probably be, come under that we had planned as part of putting through this, the big textbook purchase, but that's not getting approved till this evening, so that won't hit until next year, so. Initial discussions was it's going to happen before the end of the year, and it didn't happen. So that's on the financial report. Also, I want to mention...
So Brian, so with that hopping fiscal years, is that going to be a variance in this all next year?
We will adjust next year's forecast. I mean, the money's appropriated now and be able to spend for that. It'll just be, we'll adjust next year's forecast.
So if you kind of wash out all the timing issues, where do you think we land on a full year basis for kind of over/under in total?
As compared with May or compared with...
For the year?
Year.
For all, just for that line or all?
All, everything.
All lines? We'll be approximately, you know, we're under about, you know, 1.7 now. I would say we'll be in that range, 1,000, 1,000.7. I talked about the forecast. I believe that's 1%, 1.5% will be there, so. I don't anticipate much, as you see in May, I don't anticipate much difference as we finish out the year at this point. Actually, one thing that we are waiting on right now, and hopefully we'll get it before the end of the year, we may see a difference on, would be on, now that you brought that up, would be all other operating revenue. We are waiting on the Westerville Income Tax Sharing Agreement, and they're supposed to be paying that. And last year, they didn't, they got it in right on June 30th, so, and they pay it by check, so it's the old snail mail, so it's in the check-in-the-mail thing, so.
Checks in the mail.
Yeah. So hopefully we'll get it by the end of the year. We hadn't got it as of today yet, so we'll see. That might be a difference, so we'll, you know, we'll still be pretty much on target, but that'll be the only thing, so, a timing issue. FY15 Permanent Appropriations, you had already approved the general fund and the budget on May 22nd. This is the rest of the funds out there. For funds, you know, 400s through the 500s, which are grant funds, those are, while we have preliminary estimates at this time, and along with the other funds, we'll continue to update those as spending needs or, and when it comes to grant funds, as the allocations come in and change throughout the year, we'll update those to make sure they match up with those allocations. This is one of those procedural things that we've got to do to be able to start the year and have it filed before July 1st is the FY15 appropriations. Some people do, these are permanent, some people do it temporary where it's only covering three months, but we decided to do it for the full year, so get us started, and then we'll make changes as the year goes along. And finally, donations. We have three donations on this evening, the biggest being the dugouts at softball field on Orange Middle School, cost of approximately $9,000 from Olentangie Orange Baseball Association. We also had the Legacy Bell over at Liberty Middle School, it's a donation from the eighth grade class through the PTO. Any questions this evening on?
Were you, did you meet with the auditor, the county auditor this week? Because I got information from the Career Center.
Yes, yes, yesterday. We had lunch yesterday.
Yeah, and the ag rates were up?
Yeah. One of the things we make with the county auditor periodically, and this year is more important too, and it's only June, they're not completely done, but this year's also a triennial update. Every three years, you'd have a full reappraisal, or this year, this time is a triennial update. And triennial update is kind of, it's kind of dictated by the state and what it's going to be. He talked about preliminary, and this is preliminary. Valuation growth will be about 1% to 2%, that's just, you know, your residential homes and stuff. And that depends, it's by neighborhood, my neighborhood. It could go down in some neighborhoods, in some neighborhoods it could go up.
But overall?
But overall, for district-wide, it's about 1% to 2%. So not very much change at this point. I think we projected around a half a percent increase in our five-year forecast. So once those valuations shake out, we don't get those until late, and even after October, you know, how they finally, we don't get them until after that, but we'll definitely update them next May once that come around. But he did mention the CAUV, which is your agricultural lands, they're essentially going to double, it looks like.
Double?
Yeah.
And it's based on too crop production.
It's this very dynamic crop production, soil type. It just doubled already.
Yeah, they doubled, what, last year, and now they're going to do it again?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's crop type, soil type, or crop production, soil type, all these different factors. And yeah, so you don't have some, unfortunately, I mean, it's not, the overall valuation for us, it's not very big, but for those particular individuals, it's going to be...
If you don't, if you keep doubling the value of that property, what it's going to do is force them to develop it.
Yeah.
Right, because they tend to be land-rich, cash-poor. It's going to force them to seek alternatives for that land instead of growing crops?
And the one thing, and the one thing that he mentioned too, it's, it's over like a moving average type thing, so it's not just, it's like over a several-year period. So, you know, hopefully it won't keep doubling like that, I wouldn't think, I mean, but...
But when that doubles though, then they have to recalculate the property tax then for everybody else, so that, because when we, when we pass school issues, it's for a set amount, so if it's for...
Yeah.
So for, if it's $1 million, we can only collect $1 million. So if someone else's taxes are going up, then that will shift other people's down. Unfortunately, it's...
Yeah, and like I said, it's a very small portion. I mean, that's about, it's about 17 million, I believe, was agricultural value, and he's projecting to go to 34, but we got over $3 billion in valuation.
Okay, I assume it's larger, okay. I realized it's not small. But back to, so if it's going up 1% to 2%, we forecast a half. It's a percent on 3 billion, so it's another $3 billion in revenue, potentially?
That's just valuation.
Just on valuation.
Yeah, then it, then collection is...
The only thing...
A third of that, right?
Now, this isn't new construction. New construction, you get the full thing. This would be only on the inside mills, which is five mills.
That's right.
Once triennial update, so it's very, it's...
It's small, okay. Good, good.
All right.
Anything else?
No.
No? Okay. I can find my agenda.
Public participation. Public participation.
Public participation session number one for general comments to be having. Okay. We'll get into the discussion items. Our first discussion item is Mr. Tom Ash from Passon to give us a legislative update. Welcome back, Tom.
Thank you very much. I just might mention, as we get into the discussion and talk about your valuation changes, for those counties that are much more agricultural, which is obviously going to have a profound effect on their valuation, but remember, if we keep the same funding formula, the funding formula takes a look at your district valuation and income per pupil and compares it on a statewide basis. And it could turn out that those districts are going to wind up looking even wealthier than what they really are. And then we have questions about, are we going to be dealing with issues like caps, which this district has had to fight and guarantees? So just mentioned that. That's not my purpose this evening. My purpose this evening is to follow all of the celebration of accomplishments with all the challenges that are ahead before, as public policy. We had the, what's called the mid-biannual review legislation, which was originally offered by the administration as House Bill 483. It was over 3,000 pages long. It arrived at the State House and was promptly, upon its acceptance by the committee, divided off into 14 separate bills and divvied up among 11 different committees. Many of those pieces of legislation still have not made it through the process. The two most important ones for us are House Bill 483, which basically kept the tax portion. But then 487 is what we're going to talk about this evening because that was the education reform provisions within the bill. And I'm not even going to talk about all of that. What I'm going to do, I was asked, are you going to do the Reader's Digest version? I'm going to do a thumbnail sketch of the Reader's Digest version, and I'm going to deal with two issues. One is college credit plus, and the other is graduation requirements that are in 487. So with that, let's start with college credit plus. Basically, this does not take effect until 2015-16. But when that happens, you can forget about dual enrollment, you can forget about both secondary enrollment options, you can forget about the seniors-to-sophomores programs. All of those programs will be replaced by college credit plus. The one exception has to do with kids who are in career tech programs. That's not going to take effect until the following year, in 2016-17. And one of the reasons for that is many of our career tech centers have something that's called articulated credit, not transcripted credit. Transcripted credit is what you're used to. That's what goes, you take a college course, you pass the course, you get so many credit hours, it goes on a transcript. Articulated credit is usually an agreement between a career tech center and a community college or a two-year program. And what happens then is the credit is granted once the student enrolls in that post-secondary institution, and we call that articulated credit. But the Board of Regents is in the process of converting all of that into transcripted credit. They've completed, I think, an analysis and recommendations on about 32 separate programs so far. Their plan is to get the rest of that done this year. One of the things that is different about college credit plus is that all public colleges are going to be required to participate. There is not a choice. In addition, of course, to all public school districts. There is mentioned in the bill of some conditions whereby you might apply for a waiver. However, those conditions have not yet been published, and they're to be developed by the chancellor and the state superintendent of public instruction. To us, it seems there is an assumption that Olentangie will invite participation from all public colleges with campus within 30 miles of any one of your high schools. And I'll tell you why I believe that to be the intent. The private colleges can also participate, as can out-of-state colleges. They have to follow most of the rules that the... opportunity to negotiate with those institutions of higher education for the cost of textbooks, tuition, and fees. The original recommendation from the chancellor set a floor of $40 per hour. We had a number of districts that were paying less than that. We were letting the free market operate. We had a district, for example, down in southwestern Ohio, had an agreement for $25 per hour. And the community college in the next county came over and said, we'll do this for you for $12 per hour, whereupon the school districts all turned to them. And then, the community college that originally proposed $25 per hour changed its mind and said, we can do it for $10 per credit hour. So, we think there should be some marketplace here that's in existence, and we were successful in getting that. One thing to bear in mind, as you look down the road to 2015-16, college credit plus, they're known as other advanced standing classes. That would include also your AP classes, your IB classes, international baccalaureate classes, and any honors classes for which you provide a weighted grade, something more than a 4.0. However you treat those courses, you are going to be required to treat the college credit plus courses exactly the same way. The whole notion behind that was to create no disincentives for participation in college credit plus. Any of your college credit plus students in the public colleges cannot be charged for tuition, text, or fees. And I think that that's one thing that's going to enter into a financial forecast for year after next, depending upon what rates you're able to negotiate. If there is no agreement, if you can't negotiate something less, then there are default amounts. And here are the default amounts, but I would point out, I've underlined public IHEs, public colleges, because it's different than the private. So, if you have a kid who takes a kid at a college campus, it's taught by the college faculty, $160 per semester hour is the default. If instead, the college professor comes here to one of your high schools to offer the course, it's $80 per semester hours. And it's $40 per semester hour if it's one of your own high school faculty members who is teaching the course at your high school. But I would emphasize that that high school faculty member has to meet the requirements of the public, of the public college. And the reason for that is they have accreditation standards. So, for example, within any university, individual colleges or departments may also be accredited and have a different set of accreditation standards. For example, education has that. We have a national council that does approval of teacher preparation programs. There are certain standards that have to be met. Now, if you don't reach that agreement, then the school district has to purchase the textbooks, and I don't think I have to remind anybody what the cost of college textbooks is these days. But then, the college can, has to waive all fees. So, it's kind of to try to provide an incentive to reach an agreement. You can also have that agreement to pay less than the floor, to pay less than the $40 per hour, but the chancellor has to approve that. And the reason is to ensure the quality of the program. This needs to be a college-level course. And so, included within the provision is the college is going to be required to provide staff development if it's one of your faculty members, and also, they're going to have to make at least one onsite visit to that class in order to ensure the quality of the program. You can also negotiate with the private colleges. Now, if there's no agreement with the private colleges, there's a different set of defaults. It's $193 per semester hour at the college campus by the college faculty member, $125 if it's taught at your high school by the college faculty, and $100 per hour if it's your faculty member teaching it here. You can charge the difference between $193 per semester hour and the default ceiling of $160, but you cannot do it for economically disadvantaged students. So, there is that protection built in. If a student wants to participate, it's not automatic. They have to meet the college standards for admission and course placement. There is no sense trying to say that we want a program with rigorous quality if we don't have some standards for kids to get into the program. And so, that is provided for. Specifically exempted from college credit plus, early college high schools, advanced placement, and international baccalaureate. They are not part of college credit plus. All right. You're going to be required to advertise the program on your school district website. You're going to have to hold at least one meeting for parents. You can bring in every participating college that night if you want to. Think of one of those old-fashioned college nights, or recruiting fairs, and they can come in. The information on college credit plus and the counseling service, and I want to emphasize this, under PSEO, we started that in grade eight. This is now going to start in grade six, because gifted students who are in grades seven and eight are going to be eligible to participate in college credit plus if they meet those admission requirements. Students have to notify the school principal of their intent to participate by April the 1st. That's so you have some opportunity to budget for the coming year in terms of what participation is going to be. Now, if they miss the deadline, only the principal's going to be allowed to approve, and it has to be in writing. The thought behind that is, what happens if we have kids who move into a district over a summer? And if the principal doesn't grant permission, the student can actually appeal to the state board. So, I already mentioned one, two of the requirements for the universities. And you can also seek reimbursement from a student if the student fails the course, unless the student is economically disadvantaged. That is similar to what happens right now under PSEO. You're going to have to provide information then on AP and IB. Now, this is information, this isn't the counseling, but it's going to be provided to all students in grades eight to 11. And you have to talk with them also about, what is the process that that university uses in awarding credit for courses, including minimum scores? We're talking now about advanced placement. Most colleges use a score of three on AP, but you need to provide that information. You need to talk with parents and students about the availability of advanced placement and IB, and what kind of availabilities are available so that the tuition and fees get weighed in order to make the program possible for less fortunate families. We're going to move right away into graduation requirements, because we have some fundamental shifts here. We no longer are going to have the Ohio graduation test in the future. I noticed how well many of your students performed, couldn't help but notice that this evening. You should be very proud of that accomplishment. But we're going to have something called the College and Work Ready Assessment System. It is actually going to replace the graduation test for students who enter ninth grade after next Tuesday. This is very unusual for the state of Ohio. Normally, this bill isn't going to take effect until September. And normally, if you have a bill affecting graduation requirements, that you always make it take effect July 1, after the kids have started that class. Because under Ohio law, a school year isn't Labor Day to Memorial Day, it's July 1 to June 30. And so, this is unusual, but the reason for this is to phase out the Ohio graduation test. Otherwise, if you didn't do this, would be forced to give the Ohio graduation test an additional year. It would also mean then that in two years, we would be double-testing sophomores under two different systems. So, what this basically says is, we're going to use the OGT, and then after a year from this July, we're not going to administer the OGT to any first-time test takers. Students who have not yet passed the OGT will still have their opportunities to pass the test in order to earn a diploma. There are basically two components to this assessment system. First of all, there are going to be seven end-of-course exams, and they're outlined for you there. There are going to be a couple little differences, and I'll show you those in just a minute. All students in 11th grade will also take a nationally standardized assessment. We believe that the way this is worded, it looks a lot like the ACT, but, and it will be done at state expense. If we have a student who enrolls in advanced placement, or IB, or any other advanced standing course, so that would also include college credit plus, in physical science, American history, American government, they have to take that course exam and not the end-of-course exam. However, students will be prohibited from taking the substitute exam in English Language Arts 1 and 2, Algebra 1, or Geometry. They will have to take those end-of-course exams, except, beginning in 2015-16, the state board can decide to replace the Algebra 1 end-of-course exam with an Algebra 2 course exam. And that's going to be for those students who enter in 2016-17. And if that does happen, then the student will not take the end-of-course exam, they will take the substitute exam from either advanced placement, international baccalaureate, or college credit plus. Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, the way I read the law, though, was that you take the end-of-course exams to qualify, to graduate, or you take the ACT SAT, which you're not calling that, or you take the, you get accreditation in your joint vocational school and your career assessment, your career assessment. And I read those as "or," like you either pass all the exams or the ACT SAT.
I'm going to get to that in just a minute, okay? I'm going to call them the paths to a diploma.
Because.
You're right. You're absolutely correct. Okay, what about those kids, though, who are coming into ninth grade this year and they've already earned high school credit? You have them. Eighth graders who may have taken a high school class? All right, they're going to be exempt from the end-of-course for that exam. And if they earn the course credit, that's going to satisfy the exam requirement. There's also the issue of what's a public record. And so, on the end-of-course exams, all of the questions, and the law says, doesn't say, and the correct answers, it says, and the preferred answers, are going to become public record, but it's going to happen in three stages, starting with next summer. And within three years then, we will roll them out 40% at first, and then the second year, 20%, third year, then 40%. Because once you roll those out as public records, obviously, those questions have to be replaced, and then we're talking about money. After October 1 of 2015, students who are in chartered non-public schools will not have to pass end-of-course exams, these are, of course, non-public high schools, if the school publishes the results of the required college and career readiness assessments. But what's interesting, there's language in there that says straight out, unless the legislature enacts different requirements by that date. So, apparently, our interpretation of that is, there was a healthy discussion on that particular issue while the bill was in the conference committee. Okay, here's the answer to Julie's question. There are three paths to a high school diploma. Now, the fourth path is, you've got to complete the course requirements. You've got to earn the credit in the courses that are required. Then, there are three other ways to go. Remediation-free levels in English, Math, and Reading on this national assessment. We believe that to be the assessment that's in 11th grade. But again, it is not simply a passing score, it is a remediation-free level. A lot of discussion throughout the entire spring about remediation levels at public universities in Ohio. We have to remember, from my perspective, however, very quickly, that may not be a totally accurate number. To the best of my knowledge, for example, Case Western Reserve does not offer a remedial math class. And the point being, this is information that's gathered from public colleges and universities. We don't have a system in Ohio yet to track that. That's part of what we hope to accomplish. Second path is a minimum cumulative score on end-of-course exams. By cumulative score, what we're talking about there is all of the end-of-course exams, and then, whatever points then you're awarded, we add them all together, all right? That's very similar to the discussion that the state board of education had last summer, when they were proposing not seven or five, but rather, they were proposing 10 end-of-course exams. The third, the other pathway after completing course requirements would be for students, particularly in career tech programs. And they would have to pass a score, first of all, on a nationally-recognized job skills assessment that they would have the option to take, and then they have to earn a credential. The law talks about an industry-recognized credential, for example, the ASE certification for auto mechanics, in one of the various auto mechanics fields. Or they need to pass a state board-issued license for some specific vocation. Think of it like a cosmetology license. So, that would be the requirement then for the diploma. But it does create a path then specifically designed for career tech students. A lot of what you find in the total MBR package, not just education reform, but also in the main MBR package, has to do with jobs, and Ohio's future and its economic future. And so, that's why I think we've seen this.
Okay, but stay on this slide, because here's my idea.
Okay.
Why, for a lot of our students who are already taking, and Olentangie, a lot of our students already take ACT or SAT.
Right.
So, why wouldn't they just take that, and then our teachers, and they pass that remediation-free, and then our teachers just develop their own tests for the end of the year, for their final exams, and they don't have to teach to the state tests at the end of the year?
It's a student, because you may have some students within the same class who have, or are remediation-free in those areas, but you may have some others who are not, who are going to have to do the end-of-course exam. And that would be the only answer that I have. Certainly, you would have, you're absolutely right, you would have some classes where you would anticipate that the kids would be scoring at remediation-free, probably all of those students.
Especially if the student takes, like, we have eighth graders who take the ACT or SAT, and so, we have those scores, so we know that they're, they're going to be remediation-free or they already are. You know, so, if you don't have to make those kids, then take those tests.
Well, I have another question, and that has to be, and this is just from my devious mind, you know, is, it doesn't say that they're going to pay for the test the first time the kid's taken.
Well, right.
But that's what they should say, because most students I know take those college entrance exams more than once.
And earlier than 11th grade.
Exactly.
Yeah. But as a parent, okay, I'll let them take it again as an 11th grader and see if they do better for free.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, and I'll still have, take it, you know, their freshman year or whatever, you know, to see how they do. I'll pay for that one.
Sure.
You know?
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. We need, we need a little tweaking to do here along the way.
I'm sold on the fact that the ACT SAT in a lot of classes is the route to go, and then the teachers develop their own tests for the end-of-course exams, so they're not teaching to the state test in those seven courses.
One thing I, I'm going to just touch, I'm not going to even talk about these, I'm just going to tell you what I didn't talk about. I didn't talk about the third-grade reading guarantee, that's in there. Dropout reduction. A brand-new academic standards review committee, which is going to be comprised of citizens as well as experts. Changes to the district and school report cards. There are going to be some items that were scheduled to get a letter grade that aren't. Extracurricular participation by community school students. You have kids who are attending community schools, they may even be digital online schools. We've got to have some serious discussion about how we're going to maintain academic eligibility for those kids. And then, brand-new requirements on school emergency management plans. The notion is, we need to improve the quality of those, and so, there's going to be some state assistance provided there to do that. So, those are the basic issues, and I apologize for going a few minutes longer than expected. I have one last thing, particularly for this district. Last year, at some point in time, I spoke to a group, an advocacy group of citizens from Olentangie. I wish every district would do that. Legislators love to hear, they don't necessarily like to hear from lobbyists, they like to hear from people like you, and they love to hear from your citizens. And so, I would strongly encourage you to provide whatever encouragement you can to keep that group active. I would be happy to come and share information with them at any time, but I think it's really important, and they also become great ambassadors for this board, as they're out there meeting their relatives and friends, and just talking a little bit about all of these challenges that are ahead of all of us. So, I would be happy to respond to any questions that you have. Again, I apologize for my extended time.
We'll be ramping that committee up again. To start with, is reeducating the community on the school funding, so that when it comes time, we'll do that in the fall, so that when it comes time, budget time, our community members are well-versed on school funding, and when numbers start flying, they can speak to our elected officials regarding the needs of public education.
Budget will get dropped late January.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Very helpful. The next discussion item is the Continuous Improvement Plan revisions. Mr. Ray, Mr. Teddy?
This is an update from.
Good evening.
Discussion we have to retreat.
Here we have, I have three, basically just the three slides that summarize what the proposed changes that we talked about for the Continuous Improvement Plan. As you see, the first three benchmarks that we have on there. Benchmark one, achievement at or above projected levels of performance. There were no recommended changes to that benchmark.
Right here.
Yes.
My recommended change for having the benchmark, and number one, was to have a benchmark for parent approval and feedback for surveys given each semester to parents to evaluate the teachers, the facility, and administration, and then to ensure the progression towards the parents' goals set for their children. And that's what I mentioned at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
My recommended change for having the benchmark in number one was to have a benchmark for parent approval and feedback for surveys, given each semester to parents to evaluate the teachers, the facility, and administration, and then to ensure the progression towards the parents' goals set for their children. And that's what I mentioned at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Right, we covered that at the retreat.
No, no, I'm not saying, that was my addition, is that's not correct. I did recommend that.
And it was not accepted as a recommendation.
Right, but I still recommended it.
We understand, that's for the record, you recommended. It didn't pass, didn't get any agreement. We're moving on.
Benchmark two, to facilitate a year or more of growth for every year of instruction. Again, we're not recommending any indicators, changes to those indicators. And then Benchmark three, meter exceeds the state's achievement and gap-closing standards at the district and building level. You know, again, we're not recommending any changes in those areas. And again, I guess, given Mr. Ash's presentation with the pending changes to all the state reporting functions, and as how some of all that stuff plays out, I think it'd be prudent to just stay the course with those three indicators.
What about changing the performance index to 120?
Well, you know, the A, we set, we set the benchmark, or the indicator for that benchmark were it to be an A letter grade, or the equivalent of an A letter grade. So, when we finally crept it up to a 108, the A letter grade, you know, we say our standard is for us to shoot for that A letter grade. I think it's, now that we believe we're going to exceed the A letter grade at 108.7, that's where we want to be. We want to be at 120. We'd love to be at 120. But if we set that goal, again, I think these benchmarks and indicators should be attainable. I think there's appropriate stretch in all the benchmarks and indicators for us as a district and by the building level. Just like with the one question we talked about with the increase or maintain at least 80% of the students achieving it or above their projected levels, there's still a significant number that across the district at grade levels that per se aren't. So, it would be our recommendation to set something that high.
I do like keeping it at 108, and for a couple of reasons. Notwithstanding Mr. Ash's comment about that this grade card thing is still a little in flux, to kind of set that aside for a moment, deal with that if and when that might occur. But given that 108 level equals the A, I'd almost, frankly, I'd rather take the language, and I'm not suggesting that tonight, but take the language of that sub-bol, and really talk about it being A. We've had discussions recently, it's been about, the goal is all As, and that's been acknowledged by this board. That's our goal. I'd rather see the language focus on achieving all As at whatever level the state decides is the equivalent with numerical value. So if that's 108.5, if that's 109.0, then at that time, it'd be an automatic shift to that point. So again, I'd rather see the language focused on the letter grades, since that seems to be the goal.
And I think as the state system, because we do want to align ourselves to the state system somewhat, but I think we've said for a long time that this CIP document far exceeds the state, the minimum state standards. And we measure ourselves across more benchmarks and more indicators, and try to hold ourselves accountable for a lot more than what the state just merely asks us to be accountable for. That, you know, again, I think all As in all buildings is a great stretch goal for some buildings, especially, you know, just as an example, we had a building that had a project, a performance index that went down this year slightly. But, based on all of our internal projection data, that's what they were projected to do. They hit their number. They actually exceeded their number by a little bit, but it went down from the previous year. And that happened because we did a redistricting, and we took a lot of students out of the building, and it changed the demographic makeup of the building. We have some buildings that are projected to get 110, 112. So in that regard, it's not necessarily a stretch goal. But the other piece of that goal that's important to remember is, is that the goal is to always increase.
So with that, like Julie, I struggled with the 108, right? Because I've been on here four years now, and I don't think we've ever missed this metric. And every year, it goes up. And so basically, if we achieve this, it would be up to a .7 decline in the performance metrics, we'd call that achieves. And so I struggled with setting a goal that's lower than what I've already achieved. So I think at a minimum, it should be higher than what we've previously achieved, but yet not, I don't know if I'm ready to go to 120.
And 120 is the highest you can get, by the way.
But certainly, it's going to be at least in excess of what we expected, or, the timing in this is challenging, because we set this goal before we know for sure how we did last year. But we're pretty close in our predictions, so, you know.
And I get that it's preliminary data.
Okay. I think it'd be off by .7. You know what I mean? Maybe off by .2, in terms of the preliminary score being inaccurate.
I don't think we'll be off by .7, certainly. Dr. Way is pretty, it's amazing, the number of, based on his projection, you know, what he does with his projection data, and how our, most of our buildings met or exceeded their projections. There are other ebbs and flows in the testing, so quite honestly, some, we haven't got all the data, like, we try to compare ourselves with other districts to, hey, you know, we went up in all these areas, where did you go, did you go up, did you go down? We saw a big increase in our advanced and accelerated percentages in most of our, most of the tested areas. It was significant, and that was the big driver of why it went up 1 point, 2 points.
The other thing is, don't even put a number in there. Always to increase.
Well, again, my point is...
So then by factors, the last...
Just talk about the letter grades.
Right, yeah.
But again, it's just, that is a, I mean, it's something, it is the thing we discuss more than anything when we do this presentation or this discussion of moving it to a level.
And just to clarify, this isn't, like, we're setting a goal because we know the score, you know, the score that we know is for this year, these are the goals for next year.
And I don't have the internal, I don't have, I mean, Dr. Way will work on all of that projection data, the principals get that in hand first, first day back when we started our retreat, and, you know, they'll start...
Yeah, I don't, people don't think we're cheating on our goals here. But...
And I don't know that...
I don't, I don't...
I think it's going to be like a 109, you know? I can't, I don't know why we wouldn't, give me a reason why we wouldn't do a 109.
Well, then if you...
Because 108 is an A. I would suggest you leave it at 108.
And we're already up, and we're already at, and we're already at 107. So you want to reward a decline in the score?
Well, then I say, take the number out, and just say, always increase.
That essentially has the same, you know, again, I...
So that puts it in essence at 108.7, right? You've got to at least make that.
Yeah, right.
I'm fine with that.
I say you don't put any number, you just, your goal is to always increase every year. With ultimate goal of getting 120.
And we had rewritten this thing, we had rewritten this indicator to read the way it, to kind of...
To stay or increase.
So align ourselves with the standard, with the standard measure. And again, as you look at it, it's, because this one really is, this one's probably our minimal, minimal goal. This is our lowest goal in terms of, because this is, this is the one that just measures the state, what the state asks us to measure. Everything else we're measuring is above and beyond what the state's asking.
This is also a very comparable benchmark, right? This is the one that, for the most part, you're going to take, you go district to district to see how you're doing.
Right.
Right? So this is, while it, you know, may be the lesser one on the page, it is probably the most used.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And it's our most, you know, it's certainly the number we publicize the most.
Right.
I mean, at the end of the day, if you set it 108.7, and we get a 108.2 next year, we are going to celebrate the fact that we got an A on the state's report card, and we're going to be ejected about it, draw, I mean, we're going to not take it for granted, and we'll be looking at the reasons why, but we'll still be happy with the fact that we hit the threshold. So, that's the focus. You can put it at 120 if you want.
That's why...
Yes, it doesn't matter.
And you're going to hide the numbers, yeah.
We're going to do what we can do, and when we hit the threshold with the state, we're going to be happy.
I mean, if we can't agree on numbers, I say you don't put any numbers in.
So we, so the recommendation is to have a read, state performance index will increase over the prior year.
Right.
Which I, I agree with that, I support, we're not, it's a discussion item, but similar, you know, if we agree, we should just make the change. So do we have any disagreement on that language? Good. Adam, any thoughts?
Yeah, still think we need the benchmark indicator for the parent surveys approval.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Appreciate that. Okay.
So we'll read and try, is the state performance index will increase from the previous?
Yeah. So, I mean, why put a number in? It could be rice, you know? Does it...
Just increase over prior year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that'll shorten the future presentation.
That was our goal.
It's how you don't argue.
Mr. Ray and I don't have to talk about that.
You don't have to argue, and you're asking me, what number are we going to make?
He will just remind you what it was the previous year, that's all.
Well, the letter grades are comparable, that's what we, you compare that to other districts, newspaper compared to other districts, when we look at the As and the Bs, et cetera.
Yeah, the only other way you could rewrite is to take out, or, it will increase or maintain an A rating.
Exactly.
And then you don't, you don't have that numerical sense of a lower number. So if you write...
I think we've already agreed on the revised language.
Right.
I don't think we need to reopen.
Just stay.
I decided to try one more time. Persistence. All right. So, there were recommended changes to Benchmark four and five. In Benchmark four, increase or maintain at least 80% of juniors and seniors earning a score of three or higher in advanced placement exams, which changed from seven, we upped that from 75%. Again, given, over time, we were seeing consistent growth in that area, and...
I have a question on this, not changing it, but will we see a decline in students taking the AP exams if there's going to be more focus on college credit?
And again, as we go, I mean, I think...
I don't know.
That's a year away. 1516 is when that college credit plus program will begin. We will, you know, be analyzing, I think that's maybe a CIP for two or three years from now.
Okay.
Things are going to have to change in the college credit plus program.
Oh, absolutely. Well, because I know a lot of out-of-state schools, they wouldn't, they wouldn't accept credit from another school in-state, you know? Especially the out-of-state, and on preface this, the out-of-state private schools are very particular. They know that the IB and the advanced placement, they're, they know and trust that. They don't know and trust Columbus State. And I don't want to throw Columbus State on the bus, I'm just telling you, from my experience, that's been my experience with my own two kids.
But the philosophical shift that Tom asked uncovered, which is one of the most important ones, is the fact that we're paying for college credit right now. And what we're trying to get through is the fact that we should be able to transfer that cost to the parent. That's a big philosophical shift.
Like with the, and you do pay for the AP.
Yes. When he, when he talks about Senna's, district standpoint, that throws a different spin.
So, so we're recommending that. You're okay with increasing that one?
That's been agreed to.
Okay. Just making sure. And then in Benchmark five, will graduates prepare for educational vocation, pursue their other choice? We move that, that indicator, increase or maintain at least 75% of juniors and seniors participating in AP college credit plus courses or industry certification programs. So we move that from Benchmark four, and just reworded it a little bit to include what the future language. Even though dual enrollment post-secondary are still in place from now, we might as well start using that, using that language ahead of time. And then again, that went up from 65% to 75%. And those are the academic benchmarks, and then, Mr. Carr, do you want to talk about Benchmark seven?
Yeah, Benchmark seven is pretty much, the only, six and seven are maintaining pretty much the same. The only one we talked about, the board retreat, was changing the overall pupil to certified teacher ratio, moving up from 15.5 to 16.1.
And that was because, so that we aligned with our five-year forecast?
Yes.
We didn't just pull that out of the air.
Yes. Yeah, over the next, or the five-year forecast, we're either above 16 or very, very close at this point.
So in terms of process, Noel will approve the CIP at the next meeting as revised. Any other discussion on CIP? Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Noel.
I'm just missing my class, by the way.
Wait, we still have things to approve.
I know. You made them stay and listen to you, right?
Policy is very big in the end of the street.
That was Dr. Lee's last one. Ray?
Our next discussion item is Item C, is the second reading of the board policy updates. Exhibit B, your materials.
So, you only have 17 policies to review this time, but as I talked at the, at the first reading, most of these, almost all of them are federal and state legislative-driven, either through House Bill 59 or obvious of some of the latest requirements. So, are there any questions?
I've got a couple. On the 0130, it's the technical corrections.
Technical corrections, yes.
Where it has alterations in admissions, and it says it doesn't have to go through the normal policy adoption procedure. So, if it's circumvented, what's the process then? It's not, there's no vote on it?
There's no vote on it. If you, if there's a word in a policy that you feel needs to come out, rather than having a first reading and second reading of removing that word or adding a word, you can simply, because of this bylaw, this allows you to just insert that word through a resolution, rather than doing a first and a second reading.
Without changing the meaning?
Without changing the meaning or the content. Like if A was supposed to be and.
Right.
On the professional staff, 3122, where it goes back, we include, it says the board doesn't discriminate on the basis of race, color, national, origin, sex, transgender identity. What do we do about bathrooms? And what if there's someone that decides to go, a boy decides to go in the girls' restroom because he identifies with girls? Is that, we're going to see something from this? Would that would be, you'd be discriminating against him?
I don't know if that's covered in this policy. I don't know if that relates to this language or not.
I think it's covered under common sense.
Well, no, I don't think it is, because it's in here. I mean, how are you going to know what their transgender identity, it's kind of a personal random? Whether their sexual orientation, are we going to ask them?
And that's on the administrative...
Right. That's, that would be usually building principals having those conversations with parents.
And on 2260, for curriculum content, where it says that, to review current and proposed courses of study in textbooks, to detect any bias based upon the protected classes, fairly depict the contribution of both genders, various races, ethnic groups, et cetera. Besides being an impossible task, it's rewriting history, and I think it's inherently biased in itself doing that, to pick material from history based on race or sex to construct the curriculum. Like, you want equal coverage for World War II female generals? Well, what are we going to do for equal coverage? I don't recall any. So do we just not mention the male generals? Like General Patton?
I don't know if it's that specific or not, to be honest with you.
Exactly, that's what I mean. It's totally open to whatever, whatever you want to do.
Reviewing, reviewing materials to detect a bias doesn't mean you would change the factual accuracy of the materials?
Exactly.
It's how the facts are presented.
But it could be.
And we covered this when we passed original policy.
I know. And I've mentioned it again, because I disagree with it.
So noted.
And it's my right to.
I agree, and I'm allowing you to do that. Do you have anything else?
Actually, I've got one more. Removing gender-specific terms in the union contracts, like, we're going to remove the word mankind, freshman.
Is there a specific policy that you're referring to?
Yes, there is. 1422.
Okay.
In addition, any gender-specific term should be eliminated from such contracts. How are we going to eliminate words like freshman, mankind, fisherman? We've got them in the math books that are in here. Has fisherman, is that too biased? Freshman?
So how is freshman a biased word?
Well, it has the word as generous, man.
Actually, when we look at, oh, just the example of Robert's rules.
Fisherman, mankind.
Words like chairman...
Are we just going to eliminate those?
Are considered to be non-gender oriented.
Who says?
Robert's rules, I'm using that as an example. And you go through Robert's rules about the language you use at a board meeting.
Robert's rules doesn't, doesn't have oversight of what your...
Tell you there are certain terms, certain words...
What your vote's going to be.
That are considered to be non-gender specific.
I, I, it may say that.
Does the word mean, and does it mean it's gender specific?
Says who? That's, and South Fargo, gender specific doesn't say anything in here. It's just an open door.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
I think I'm finished right now.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else? Thank you, Ms. Mark. The last item was the amended item, item D, Sunday graduation. As Dr., no, excuse me, Dr. Lucas noted in the superintendent's report, the discussion is to move graduation to Sunday, May 17th, for the 2014-15 school year. Understanding, you know, the challenges we've had with the new school year moving it earlier on a Saturday, has made some other extracurricular, curricular challenges, you know, for student attendance. So kind of had some discussion on it last time. Do we have anyone that's opposed to moving it to the fifth, to Sunday? Julie?
I just want to say that my concern was that last graduation time on Sunday, because it's late for people traveling out of town. But what decided it for me, and I want to preface this by saying, technically, we don't have a vote in this, because this is every...
It's administrative.
It's administrative, but they're letting us provide input, so I, I want to make sure that I'm not overstepping my boundaries here. But what, what is a bigger, a bigger decision for me is that if a, if a student has to decide between playing in the lacrosse regional tournament versus going to graduation, I don't want to put that student in that position.
I agree.
So that's why I can understand moving it from Saturday to Sunday. I wish there was something we could do about that last late graduation on Sunday. But in my mind, how I convince myself of this, that's an adult, that's affecting an adult. And so I don't, not that I don't like adults, but I don't want to have to put the child or the student in having to make the decision. So by moving it to Sunday, we eliminate any conflicts that they might have with music competitions or sport competitions. So that's why Sunday fits better.
And we just really, I think, had a discussion with high school principals about the timing, maybe we can condense the time between them if it works a little better. And if we start a half hour earlier and condense some time, maybe we can get out of there a little earlier.
That could squeeze an hour out, right? Because you take a half hour in between each other.
Right, between. So, you know, those are things we have, if they feel comfortable with that. It does, because the classes are getting bigger, they're going to take a little bit longer, is that problematic?
Just shorten Lucas's speech. But, you know, I too, I understand the conflicts, I understand the rationale. You're never going to eliminate those conflicts, right? Did you, your point, Julie? But I think this is a way to try something different to see if it works better and, you know, look at it again next year and see how it goes, see if you get any additional issues that pop up that we're not aware of now.
We're going to have conflicts with high school grad, or with college graduations, whether it's Saturday or Sunday, you know, so...
And we have had Sunday graduation here before.
Right.
I think it was like three years.
It was the first year that Orange had a graduating class.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on Sunday graduation?
So we can't emphasize Sunday.
Adam, you're okay with Sunday graduation?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sunday, May 17.
That's the administration's recommendation? Okay. So I would quickly and...
Very quick.
Clearly change the calendar, make people aware.
Yes.
So that people can plan accordingly, so we don't have any surprises. All right. Any other discussion on that? No? Okay. So we're now done with discussion items. The next item is public participation, session number two. Do we have any public participation? No. Okay. Board action items. We have four board action items. The first one is to accept with regret the resignation of Board Vice President Stacy Dunbar effective June 18th, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve that?
We do it individual items?
Yeah, we have to do it individual.
Second.
Any discussion? And a motion and a second? Any, no? Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feazal?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, the next item is to elect the board vice president, because Stacy, prior to her resignation, was the vice president of the board. And this would be for the remainder of 2014 until we reorganize on a new basis, which is done at the January board meeting. So with that, I would open it up to nominations for board vice president. And if I could, I would like to nominate Julie Feazal as vice president of the board.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Feazal?
Yes.
Congratulations, Julie. Well, now, would be action item C is to administer the oath of office.
He has signed something too, so...
Page your writing. I, Julie Feazal, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully and partially discharge my duties as vice president of the Board of Education and enforce that of the Montage Little School District to the best of my ability in accordance with the laws in effect here after being active during continuous in said office until my successor is chosen and qualified.
I will.
All right.
Yes.
You clap along. I'll leave that to you if you want to change seats.
No, I'm fine.
Next is board action item D is to approve the policy updates. Do I have a motion to approve board action item D?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feazal?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. That's it for board action items. Treasure action items, Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Adam, let's pull up A, C, and D, please.
All right, let's go ahead, and I'll recommend for treasure action items, A, which is approving financials for May 2014, C, which is approve amended FY14 appropriations at the fund level, and D, approve FY15 appropriations at the fund level.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Feazal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, so those items pass three to one.
Okay, so we still have treasure action items, B, approve board meeting minutes for May 7th and May 22nd, 2014, and E, approve donations to the district.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feazal?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Dr. Lucas, to begin the process of superintendent action items?
Present superintendent action items, A, A as amended, please.
Can you pull out A, 2, A 4, A 6, A 10 through 12, B 4, and C?
And C? So let me see what's being pulled. We're all trying to keep on the same page here. So we're going to pull the extended service contract for Nancy Fries, Chris Tressel. We will pull the approved additional prep periods. We will pull the new teacher academy, pull the certified positions paid through memorandum and billing, supplemental positions, and pupil activity supervisor, in essence, all the coaches and co-curriculars. We will pull certified positions in B 4, I'm sorry, classified positions paid through memorandum and billing, and the textbooks.
Yes.
So those are, present those. So I'll have to go through that again.
So present superintendent action items, A, 2, 4, 6, 10, 11, 12, B 4, and item C for approval, please.
I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Feazal?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
And present ALR, all the rest.
All the rest.
Superintendent action items, A through K as amended.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
So if, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Feazal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Now, Gail.
And we also have a human resource.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on the agenda. Gail has to present it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's a big one.
Ten seconds.
Oh, that one. Okay. Oh, there it is. I missed it, sorry. So who is, Mr. Vars, would you like to come present your action item, please?
Would like to approve the last action item on the agenda, and that is for the approval of Nancy Lucas to be the JV girls tennis coach at Liberty High School.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is nothing new.
No, this is the third time maybe we've done this at least.
Yes, and she was tennis coach in Groveport.
Yeah. Okay. Please, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feazal?